Alrighty, it is seven o'clock. I will call the March sixth meeting to order. Unfortunately Diana is sick, so you have me this evening. So, to begin with, roll call. Rod?
Yes.
Leah, here. Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Leah?
Carley.
Carley, here.
Here.
Jessica, I'm here as well. And Slerno?
Yes, the meeting has been noticed properly.
Alrighty, let me join me for the pledge, come on please Jim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to be the mission statement?
I will. The Mount Morb area's school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you Rod. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Some motion?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty, approval of the February 20th, 2023 board member regular and executive meeting minutes. Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, Dr. Slerno, we have our student spotlight this evening.
How cool is this gonna be? I'm so excited because Victor has just come highly recommended by his two teachers who are with us tonight. I might just turn it over to Viking One. Rachel Johnson, how are you tonight?
Good, I'm good. So, every time this comes up, I put out like a nomination form to staff, and we have staff tell us why their student should be the Board of Education's student spotlight. I bring our nominees to our student services team to kind of look through, and unanimously Victor definitely rose to the top, although we're really proud of all of our Vikings who were nominated. So I'd love to share what his teachers shared that definitely put him at that respectful, responsible, and ready Viking that we aspire all of our students to be. Victor exemplifies what it means to be responsible, respectful, and ready. No matter what, he comes in every day ready to learn, work hard, and give it his all. Victor is kind, compassionate, and respectful to everyone in the building. Students gravitate towards him because of his kind and welcoming nature. One thing that we admire most about Victor is his positive attitude. Even if we're doing something that's really hard, or not even the most exciting, Victor is always positively engaged. He goes out of his way to help others and his teachers in the classroom. When something needs to get done, we don't even have to ask because Victor's already doing it. He's truly a remarkable student and so deserving of the spotlight. We're so proud of you.
Love that smile, don't you? Who are all these amazing people here to support you tonight? Can you introduce them for us?
So who's this?
That's my sister Esperanza, and that's my dad, and my teacher Mr. Pelton, and my other teacher Miss Fox.
And board members, you may remember, although it was it was about January 2019, thereabouts, Esperanza herself was selected as a student. So that's why you see, looks familiar. And just a beautiful family you have. Mr. Pelton, any questions or any comments you'd like to share tonight?
No, I mean that sounded about perfectly. We absolutely love having Victor in our class. He's a good one. We'd keep him forever if we could.
He's an amazing guy, just a heart of gold, very compassionate, just embodies that respectful, responsible, ready behavior. He really just loves life to the fullest. Great guy.
We appreciate both of you and what you do for our kids each and every day. So thank you. Would it be okay if we took a picture together? Yes, and I'd like to bring a friend and colleague along with me. This is Mrs. Carley Fisher. She is the Leah, and I'm to the Board of Education. And my friend Sarah is gonna help take this picture. We have two certificates for you tonight. One, I thought I'd try my hand at Spanish. It's been a while since I've taken Spanish class, so I think I may have gotten this correct in Spanish. You'll tell me if I'm wrong. Will you grade this for me? Yeah? And then I pull him, and he's like, alright. But then I also wanted you to have one in English, and then also a pen, just to commemorate this special event. So what do you say, we go take a picture outside? Okay, let's do that.
Same question. Colorado. In July of 2019, I went to work for a company in Janesville, and then difference of opinion about how my job should be done. And about three, four months later
Three months, yeah. March, April, May.
I was hired by this company.
In terms of summer, will you give your summer? What are you doing for that? Fantastic.
If I was to work in a mall for a company here, you know, I could go. I'd go once a month.
Yeah, I don't go.
I'm two and a half hours.
That's good. Oh yeah. So our people, we need quarterly. So they come in quarterly. But when we have our quarter, we can sure all that's gonna happen. Especially because you just took out like a side project. Like, we don't come in to do business. Like we have little bits of stuff. But it's mostly, we're gonna do fun stuff if we're gonna fly people.
It's just not, it's not, I don't know. I can't stand that.
So May is already planning. She's like, oh. Research that passport thing, like you're in charge of that. I'm gonna have to actually work. She's like, okay.
And it's a lot. It's a lot.
But anyways, I don't know how I'm into this, but yeah, just now.
Everyone knows everything about the science.
You get as much data as you can.
Yeah, right, right.
Anyways, and this weekend, Josh's work has a work party.
It is what it is. We'll find some soon enough. Not a great market, that's for sure.
She deserves it. Do you know finance? I was looking for finance.
Is there a reskill? Yeah, I wish it did.
It's so our software, my account software.
Is it, is it, so accountants use your software? That's your primary?
Accountants use our software. Like my biggest fan is a stretch out.
Oh, so it's like internal management for someone?
So you don't root for all the rest of them? In the UBS next year, you know? So we just like all the stuff. But we just behave. I mean, my parents, so. I'm like niche market, like I am not the accountant.
Right. Right, yeah, exactly.
And my counterpart of worksheet is in accounting. So I'll be on the call and I'll say something.
And she'll be like?
Nope, sometimes she's like, yeah. I knew that, I knew the answer to that one.
Yeah.
And sometimes I look at her like, it's because my cost of goods is wrong. She's like, no.
No.
Right, right. I took it in class, in my palette, I took accounting. It was stupid.
Yeah.
Like it'd be like, here's a number, and here's a number. What's this number? Well, it's math. Like, debit equal credits, it's math. I don't know where this number came from. But it's like, it's old math.
Well, and the funny thing is, for most people, unless you are in, you're a financial analyst or an accountant, you don't need to know what the math is. If you gotta trust the person who puts your income statement together, right? But if you don't, if you can do that, then you don't need to know the math.
I need to tell you, this transaction is jail impacting. As long as you're not in your room. What accounts you want it to hit?
Yeah. Right, right, that's, yeah, you got it, right.
Yeah, I deal with a lot of our manufacturing clients because that's what I did before. Which is almost fun, like explain to somebody what a work order is, and like what a bill material is.
Really?
Okay, I will explain it to you. Let me explain to you like your topic.
Well, it's sort of interesting because the only time that I would go
It's supposed to be really quick.
Had any instruction in it was about when I worked for a company that wasn't generating any, well, still was operating with the laws. So they always wanted to be measured by investors.
Does it mean your dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, three B's, school news. Ethan, would you like to start?
Yeah, so I did a short list as big as our winter sports ended in the last couple of weeks. But, so tomorrow night, not tomorrow night, next week, Tuesday, the orchestra is hosting their pops concert at 7:30. Tomorrow, the juniors are taking their ACTs.
Good luck.
Wish you luck for them, right? And then also, last week, our DECA had their state championship and performed very well. We had 14 students who qualified for the national event.
Awesome, thank you. Dr. Slerno?
And I think that's happening down in Orlando here.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, look at how great these kids look, and they continue to make us proud. I had a couple of items that I thought would be of interest to you. First, I want to thank Jake Schroeder. Jake, thank you for being here tonight. I often forget to recognize our students for taking time out of their busy schedules to help us with our video production. You always do such a nice job, you and your class. Math 24, last week, a number of our students competed at a conference here in Madison, and as you might expect, our Vikings did us proud. I got a few pictures of that that I thought maybe you'd be interested in seeing, and we put those up just a few minutes ago on Facebook. And then, here are some students who are busy this weekend at the Middle School Science Olympiad, regional competition. That took place in Milwaukee. And I want to thank Mrs. Stoddard, who is the sponsor of that program. And then, gosh, I'm so proud of these kids. This is so much fun. We have 10 females, 10 males, who were recognized by the academic all-state for the Wisconsin Basketball Association here. So these are the 10 females who we became aware of just the other day. In order to get this prestigious award, you have to have a 3.5 GPA or higher, while also on varsity. And so this is nothing to sneeze at. And then, of course, these young men here were also selected for their academic prowess as well. I want to thank all of our coaches, because I know they instill that along with our families to encourage our kids to do great things. And last but not least, you looking for a date night this Friday night? Here's a great opportunity. 5:00 PM or 7:30, your choice, maybe dinner and a show. Because our students are going to be performing what's called the Brothers Grimm, and it's only $5. It's by our high school drama club. All are welcome to attend. It promises to be like any other program you've done, just really remarkable. So I'm excited, it'll be a great, great week.
School board members, anyone else?
Mini promise on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30, and we have so many things for our silent auction. Like, we got donations from everywhere and everybody, so come by. And if you don't want to dance, bid. There's lots of stuff to bid on.
Anyone else?
The other thing that I would point out is, it's the time of year that we typically get letters from our seventh graders. So I got one over the weekend, I'm sure many of you did as well. The letter that I got was about inclusive playground equipment. I did respond, so in case somebody else has time, I'll rubber back. And I did point out to her that I thought it was something that could be possibly taken up in buildings and grounds. You know, that we would need to sort of take an assessment of what we have, maybe talk with families about what additional equipment would be, you know, what students and families like, and then whether or not we have the budget for it. But she wrote a really nice letter, and I'm sure there are many others that are being, you know, sent to Dr. Slerno, to the school principals and that. So anyways, I just, it's a good project.
Do we have any citizen comments?
Didn't see anyone sign up, but.
Number four, personnel transactions, anything to note?
Thank you, Jessica. You'll see an addendum tonight.
Motion to approve with the addendum.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on, number five, the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty, six A, our first discussion items, committee member reports. Adam, do you want to begin?
Yeah, absolutely. A good building grounds transportation meeting on February 27th. Lot of stuff, Brian Toth has been, has been a busy man. Went to the Wisconsin School Bus Association's first ever legislative day down at the Capitol on February 1st. He met with three reps, Hasselbein, Constantine and Bear. Constantine, he mentioned is a former school bus driver, so they had a lot to talk about that way. And he's already, Brian's already providing some input on a bill that Mike Bear has a motion, so already providing a great resource there. He just, he mentioned, asked a little bit about like what the scuttlebutt is and that, chatting, you know, his peers, because he sees a lot of them there, and just talking a little bit about, it surfaced, he was really proud of our work to get the exterior bus cams installed. That's advantage that not every district has, and really helpful for peace of mind for the drivers, knowing that if there are some violations, especially if the red light stops, that the license plates are captured for them. They don't have to stress about what just happened and trying to keep their eyes on kids getting out of the bus and the cars at the same time. So just wanted to tip of the cap to that. Had School Bus Driver Appreciation Week in the middle of February. Kids did some awesome artwork, thank you gestures for drivers. And then one more note on the bus situation. We had the, remember the GeoTab software that we're beginning installing in the buses. Got it scheduled for the week of spring break. It's a little bit later than he wanted. Was talking about a full rollout for next fall, but that schedule may be delayed just a little bit to make sure that there's proper testing and kind of acclimation, and a chance to message out to the community exactly what, how things will change before they go into effect. Credit to the snow removal team, they're busy in February, especially on Thursdays. Progress, a lot of progress on the softball lights. I'm not sure if those are in yet.
They are in.
They are in, it's fantastic. We've had some breaks in the weather and been able to get that, so we'll be ready for the springtime. And then, just kind of revisiting the installation bids for tennis and pickleball at this point, to get that back off the ground. That work is out and ready to be, ready to be done.
Anyone have any questions for Adam? Jim, would you like to give the finance committee report?
Absolutely. So the finance committee, we met on February 13th, and so I'm not gonna have anything too earth shattering because we did have a meeting after that, so you guys have heard everything we've talked about. We did accept two very generous donations though, that we're always appreciative of. The Nicholas Day Memorial Fund, $4,000 to support the cross-country team, and Julie Marsh House and Glenn Bauer, $3,000 to help fund some scholarships for our youth this summer. So, very, very generous, and we really appreciate that. We discussed a number of policies. We're gonna see the second reading on most of these tonight. So three policies to do with our lunch programs, and then some others with advertising and gifts to the school. So, discuss those policies, we'll learn more about it here in just a second. We talked about some dates already with audit this summer, and so, as you may expect, Scott is all over that, and we are in great hands. So, our next meeting will be next Monday night, the 13th of March.
And then I have the report for the SOA committee. We met on February 20th. Brian and Carol discussed Percy Brown's presentation to the staff, and then Brian also talked about the student forum that's happening, I think, next Monday. And then the district equity team, when they were going to meet next to talk about specific issues of racism that staff reported and addressed those issues and concerns. That meeting has been moved to March because of snow days. We spent a good amount of time going over the YRBS data from the spring, and we have officially signed up for next year's. We also signed up for the Dane County Youth Survey. Brian talked about his attendance at the National School Psychologist Conference, and he brought back a book that he and his staff are gonna do for a book study called Troublemakers. And gave us an update that the digital mapping of buildings is almost done. He and his team are also working on making sure that messages can get out through infinite campus a little bit quicker in case of emergency, like when that student was missing. And they're also working with the Admin Camp Council to save a staff meeting so the safety team members can talk about everything. Just, if you recall from the staff wellness survey, there were some concerns about staff feeling safe. So they're gonna work on having a meeting just to kind of remind staff of all the work that has been done to help make them feel more safe. The bus garage testing is ending March 24th. If anyone is in need of tests, they can get them through our school nurses. And as far as I know, we have a large amount of tests available. So if anyone needs one. Again, we talked about the YRBS survey data. I believe it's gonna be presented to the full board maybe next month? So I'll save, I'll save it for then. We also talked about different items that get brought to us from organizations, and when it's appropriate for us to address them, and when possibly not. And that, you know, things should be always brought through our committee level discussions, and then we move, we decide how to move them forward. And our next meeting is March 20th.
That meeting's canceled, right?
That meeting is canceled, yes.
Oh, that's right, I knew that.
Hopefully we'll be meeting again in the third, Monday of April.
Yes, thank you, for a very good reason. Brian's son is going to state, I mean Nationals. Alrighty, so moving on to six B, information and advocacy reports with Sarah. We have two of them.
Hello? Yeah, you get me twice tonight.
Right?
Alright, so the first one is around our applicant pool. So this is something that we provide information on. It is kind of a point in time report, so it does lag a little bit. And then each year, I kind of show the full year. So we'll kind of look a little bit back at last year, and then kind of where we are as of our January 3rd, personnel transactions and everything. Alright, so here, the first part is just kind of talking a little bit about how many postings we had, those sorts of things. And again, it's kind of a snapshot in time. So as of December 28th, we had 74 postings for the school year. And that's just looking, or for that year. And so we're just looking at all of that. And then you can kind of see down here in the table what that reflects. We have seen our applicant numbers go up. So as you can see, we're getting back to those pre-pandemic numbers, but still a little bit lower than what we'd like to see for applicants coming through. We had, for year-to-date, the certified staff, 393 applications, and then support staff 117, with a total of 510 for this year-to-date snapshot, but then looking back at last year, 21, 22 school year. Again, just kind of seeing that those numbers are going up, and that's what we'd like to see, but definitely want to look at, do it a little bit more. And we do have a three-year average of 729, so we are above that, which is nice to look at as well. I wanted to pull some data. I know last year, we talked a little bit about this, and just kind of seeing where we're at as they've progressed. There's a little bit of a break in there that you can see. They changed the definition of how they look at enrolled, and so that's why you see that data having a little bit of a break in there. But this is a really positive thing that we're seeing. We're seeing several people are enrolling in the programs in Wisconsin. So EPP is Educator Preparation Programs. And we're seeing that there's, Wisconsin is at the top there with, in the 2019, where, when you look at this around any states. So you're seeing a lot of people enrolling in the Wisconsin programs. If you do scroll down a little bit, one of the things that you are noticing though is, we're a little bit more in the middle here, which isn't bad, but there is a bit of a drop-off in terms of people that are completing and converting over into licensing here. So. With that data, you can imagine we do have a need for emergency licensing. It's also called more now, I think emergency license is the older term. They call it license with stipulations. There's one year, there's three years, that sort of thing. But it's another non-traditional pathway for individuals to pursue licensing, and we've had staff that have pursued this as well. But it's just another way for people to get into that education realm without going through a formal educator preparation program. Or maybe they are, but there's lots of different pathways that they can go. You saw there was definitely a spike in the 2021 timeframe, but we're still seeing that, you know, over 3,000 emergency licensing are getting approved in a year. So it definitely helps to balance out some of those other things that we're seeing. As we move into our recruitment sources and kind of applications, just looking a little bit more here, you know, there's lots of different things that we're trying. This last year, we offered some onsite walk-in Wednesdays in the summer, held some, those on Wednesdays in August, and we held one in December as well, to bring, you know, people into the district so they could talk with managers. We've also created, we know sometimes, putting out the actual application sometimes takes a little effort, you know, that maybe people are just kind of wondering a little bit about a position. So there's an interest form, it's a Google form. Give us your name, number, what are you interested in? We'll reach out to you. That also builds on our text messaging form that we have too, so people, when they, they can reach out to us and say, hey, put me on your text messages. When we have openings, we'll reach out to people. So just trying to find ways to connect with people more quickly, answer questions, get them in the door. We know, especially our food service, bus drivers, those managers, and Dave Reed, they're anxious to meet with people as they're working through that. So it's more support staff focused in those auxiliary services area, and we've had a lot of success there in reaching people. But our word of mouth, our employees, right? They are amazing, and they love what they do, and they love to share that with people as well as the community. I just talked to someone who, I said, how did you learn about this? And they said, well, my cousin works in, or lives in, is in that district, and she's keeping an eye out for me, and just let me know that this was out there. So we know that those things are working, and the word travels fast. As we look at the candidate experience rating here, we've continued to maintain around that four and a half overall average rating. Some of the feedback that I saw come through is, as we're trying to balance, you know, everyday tasks and those sorts of things, how are we connecting with people? Do they prefer electronic or more of that phone call, personal touch? So trying to balance that out a little bit, and then also just that training piece and timing. So we have some people that we hire, like now, as you saw, personnel transactions, but they're not starting until August. And so how do you kind of keep all that together and keep them engaged? So I think some things that we can think about doing to stay in touch with those folks. And just as like I said, figuring out what is working best for people in terms of communication. And then we move on to our retention rate. Here again, so you'll see, it's the 21, 22 school year, so I kind of went back and from our last report, looked at where we were at, and then where we're at this year, again, is as of the January 3rd transactions, just to keep that same timeframe that we've had in the past. So when you look back at last year, we had a total of eight retirements and 48 resignations. And then this year, where we're at as of January 3rd, with that six retirements and 11 resignations. So this is something that we'll kind of build back on next year when we report out as well. I think one thing to note, as I was looking through just the different labor statistics that are out there, and looking back at our last year, the average of turnover rate for education industry was around 16%, and we were below that, just below that at 15.18%. So, you know, hovering right around that average that we're seeing.
I think TPI just released a report saying that retention for teachers within their first five years is, what? 65% leave within their first five years? So that we're doing way better than the state.
I was just gonna ask, do we?
I was just going to ask, do we separate it out in terms of resignations between new and veteran teachers? Are we seeing it more in our younger, newer teachers? I should say.
That's a good question. I would want to look back at the data on that. We definitely could look at that and kind of those timeframes to see what that looks like. I mean, obviously with the retirements, those are going to be the.
Sure.
And the resignations is up here, you can see for faculty, you know, a little bit surprising, right, that we see at 1.03%, but part of that is for your data, part of that is with our retirements, but then also, sorry, these are not retirements. We had some resignations kind of that mid-year in September. We had a couple faculty, at least one or two faculty that decided to head out before the end of the year. So those are some things that we would like to figure out how we can manage that a little bit differently as well, but we also want people to make decisions that are right for them as well.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, our numbers are really low, so that's.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think when we look at this, it, you can see from 2021, our numbers, with the exception of that faculty number and some of our others, but the other can be such a small amount that one or two can really jack that up. But, you know, I think overall, when we look at that, we definitely were able to retain, you know, there were some things that was put in place in our transportation area and food service area with some retention bonuses that I think is helping, again, and people are getting back into some of those regular routines and just the managers and our leadership that they have are doing such a great job at connecting with people, figuring out what they need and that sort of thing too.
Do you tend to see a time of year that if there's going to be, do the quantity of resignations that rise and fall? Like if we are going to see that 1% tick up, is it all going to come in June or?
Well, my goal for faculty would be that it's not happening in the mid-year. But yeah, so I think, you know, we would like to see, you know, those sorts of things. I think it's a, it's a challenge, right? Sometimes in education, it's very cyclical and some things trickle down into other, I mean, we had a higher last minute faculty that trickled into other areas too. So I would say where we tend to see that is a little bit more towards summer. I mean, we've had a few others come through, but for relocation purposes or things like that, and we appreciate knowing sooner than later so that we can post for those. I feel like March has been a busy time in terms of support staff area and kind of that January to March time seems to be a little bit busier. And then I would say that summertime, as people are thinking about, am I returning? Am I not? As people are recruiting, it tends to get a little bit more busy.
For teachers, we have, their contracts are due back May?
Uh, May 15th, June 15th. Sorry, we have to get them out by May 15th or looking back June 15th.
Our teachers are the only group that don't have a liquidated damages clause. And I think that's unusual for this region, quite frankly, for many parts of the state.
Actually, that was just reinforced. I went to, I was going to talk about that in the comp thing, but that's okay. It was reinforced that a lot of districts with the faculty do have liquidated damages. They attended, several districts came together just to kind of think about compensation in general and talk about different things. And one of the things that I saw in some of the data was, there was a question about that, and we were one of the few districts that does not have some sort of liquidated damages for our faculty.
Sarah, were there any numbers associated with that?
No, there wasn't. So with, you know, if that's something that the board would like to explore, we could definitely ask. I believe we've had something in place in the past that went away. So, you know, I think we could look at something like that too, if that's something the board would want to.
I think it'd be interesting to see what the high end, what the low end would be there.
Well, and like a lot of times, it's not, you know, it depends on when too, right? You know, if you're giving us it in August, it's going to be higher than if it's in June, maybe after you've turned your contract in.
It's pretty clear in terms of how to implement liquidated damages and that you can only recover the actual costs associated with replacing a candidate. So there are some school districts that I think have gone exceptionally off the line and I think what we're trying to do is preclude any kinds of last-minute impact to our, to our kids in continuity of instruction. Something we'll be talking about with our leadership about.
Other questions?
Okay. So then, as we move on, you know, one of the things we like to look at, and this data, it's hard because not everyone completes the exit survey. And again, for the 22, 23 year, it's a little difficult because of where we're at in timing and everything. But if we look back at the 21, 22 school year, you know, the top reason, retirement. And then you do see in there relocating family reasons and just find, dislike management policies and practices is those second highest reasons. You know, I think we do hear a lot, I know some of the resignations that have come through after January, we've got people that are relocating, whether that's faculty or support staff, to be closer to family or be in the same school district as their kids, that sort of thing. I want to dig in a little bit more to that dislike management policies and practices. I think that there are lots of different reasons that that could be, but want to see if there's anything there that we can look at and maybe think about doing differently. And sometimes things just don't align too, right? So that's okay. We want to have people in here, in our district that, where we do align with what we're trying to do as a district as well. So, but yeah, that's something I think we could dig into a little bit more.
Are these open-ended or is this like a checkoff list?
Um, it is a checkoff list and this is their top reason. So, yeah, there is opportunity for comments and stuff too, so digging into that a little And for this year, and when I looked at those, obviously compensation was on there, which we've talked a lot about and we're thankful to be able to have that recurring operating referendum that the board so thoughtfully put out as well as our community supported. So I think hopefully we'll see less of those. And then just overall, you know, not horrible, I, I hear so many great things with people that I talk with, why they're, why they come here, why they stay here. It really is about the colleagues, it's about our students, it's about the support from the community, the benefits that we have. And so really just putting that all together, it just makes not horrible such a great place to be and people want to be here and we do see people are staying. More questions? Any vast along the way, but anything else?
I don't think so. We want to move on to the next one?
Yeah. I don't have to sit down and come back up?
We can.
Yeah, so moving on to compensation, as I mentioned, I know that's something we've all been talking a lot about for a while. And we're really excited about being, about next year and news that we've shared with some staff already has just been so positive. People are so appreciative and excited and just looking forward to, I know even for, as I'm recruiting for the HR assistant, we've just seen some really quality people coming through and seeing those numbers for those applications come up and qualified applications too. So really looking forward to how that's going to be furthering impacting others. And we've even taken the step of advertising the pay rate for July 1st to let people know, hey, this is what's going to be coming for you so that it will bring more people in. So every year, we do look at our specific comparables, DeForest, Evansville, McFarland, Middleton, Cross Plains, Monona Grove, Oregon, Stone, Ploton, and Wannakee. And in a lot of the things, all of those schools will be represented, but in some areas, like for example, like food service, bus driving, there's some of those that you're not going to see those schools. Some, not all of the schools will be represented. And of course, whenever you're talking about compensation, that's one piece, right? We have a really robust total rewards package. There's so many different things. We have such a low-cost healthcare insurance plan, even if someone chooses that point of service plan, they're really getting a great benefit. And I think the ability to keep courts has been huge for our district and our, and not having to change our plan design. And a lot of that honestly goes back to our employees and being such good consumers of their healthcare. So kudos to them for that because we know that that's important to our employees and they really can drive the cost there. So we also have our post-impairment retirement employment benefits as part of our total compensation package, and that is something that I have heard other districts are discontinuing and looking at other things. So I think that's just one of the other pieces that really helps set us apart as other districts are looking at eliminating those or changing those too. The other thing that we do is, as a reminder, I know I've talked about this previously, we have a stipend. That is something that most districts do not do. This is for hourly staff that don't qualify for health insurance. Throughout the year, they get a stipend. And then of course, this year, we had SRF funds that the district and the board elected to give to our staff, which is another piece this year that helped with compensation and just really appreciate, appreciate you being able to do that for them. And as a reminder, our staff that are hourly, not only do our faculty have their longevity and their ways to move forward, we offer the longevity for our hourly staff as well. So just a little bit about the data. I know one of the questions was around, you know, what do some of these things mean? So we have our beginning rate and that's really looking at the data that districts participate in. So there, when this first started, there were about 20, 25 districts that were participating and now it's up to 50, just over 50. So it's doubled in size over the last few years and it's really great because it's a point-in-time snapshot of wages for the current year and we're able to see a lot of different pieces and look at all those different data points. So the beginning represents, you know, the beginning, starting wage, lowest. The median is taking those positions and it's not taking the average, it's actually taking the median because that offers a better way, if you have outliers, to see what that true median is. And then the max or highest amount is generally going to be the highest reported. So I know in our district, we maybe have a max out, but we might have someone making more than that, so it really is on that top earner that is being recorded. And that may or may not fall within their structure. So here, you'll see that data and here, and the custodian is a great group to look at because they have, all districts have custodians. And so as you can see here, when we look at that median, the district is below kind of that average that we'd like to see. So when we average all the districts together, it comes to $20.03 and we have our median at $15.93. And again, that starting rate too is something I think we really like to look at because we are bringing new people in. And so as you can see there, we're below that average that we have across the districts.
And this is all current? This is not what we will be?
Correct. This is based on our 22, 23 data and even our teacher data, as you'll see later, is pre-negotiations because of when we were pulling all this and reporting the information.
Would you mind if I just quickly interrupt? And you're doing such a great job. Would be helpful just to remind the board that all of our support staff, save one group, will receive a $4.50 increase per hour. So if you took this beginning wage on custodians of 1552, beginning July 1st, just add $4.50 and this is only possible as a result of our community's continued support of our referendum. Every support staff group but one, our general education paraprofessionals will start at $20 or more per hour, which we think puts us far more favorably in compensation compared with other school districts, but then that of the private sector as well.
Yeah. So yeah, I think this data just really supported the need for that operational, recurring operational referendum and is going to do some really great things for the district in bringing in talent and maintaining that talent as well.
Sarah, do you mind if I ask a question before we do further? Can we scroll back up to the, the support staff salary increases or hourly increases?
This year?
Yes, the longevity. We talk a lot about how the other numbers are compared to other districts. Are these increases comparable, comparable to other districts? Do other districts implement this kind of thing?
That I don't know the answer to. I imagine that many districts do have some sort of longevity where staff are doing that, but I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, Steve, if you, from your experience.
I mean, we talk about this every year and I just wasn't quite sure. How to put it in perspective.
The number of intervals, I would argue, is greater than other school districts, but in terms of what those intervals equal in terms of wage, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I don't know. And unfortunately, that's not something that's part of the survey that we participate in. I mean, I could absolutely ask a question and get some data and get back to you.
That'd be good. Thank you.
So yeah, looking at our general education paraprofessionals, again, you can see there we're below those averages and so looking forward to looking at this next year with our adjusted wages. And then special education, same thing here. There are some of those little numbers by these and that's just really representing, again, just to remind the team that the $1,000 stipend is something that people might qualify for in some of these positions. And then our food service area, we've had a lot of newer people, so you can see our median is looking like our starting wage because we have had a lot of new people join, join us this year. And here, again, we're getting closer to those comp averages, but still some work to do there and next year will be really well set.
If you don't mind me interrupting, just as a friendly reminder, food service does not operate ideally out of our general fund. It's self-sufficient and so a tip of the hat to Michelle Dank, our Director of School Nutrition, helps get us to a good point there. But they too will receive the benefit of the $4.50 per hour beginning July 1st.
And then our administrative assistance, so this is includes district office and building staff. So that's why you kind of see a little bit wider ranges, especially at the top there. But again, as we look at this, we're below those midpoint, those averages when we look at all the districts compared together. So our, you know, they'll be getting the.
They'll get $5.
Five dollars, five, five, five dollars.
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
Beg your pardon. And the reason for that is because we believe that we need to attract even higher skill for this work.
And actually, again, as we talk about the HR assistant position and even we had an internal movement with our student services, administrative assistant, I know what we're seeing compared to when we recruited previously, we're seeing a really stronger pool of candidates out there. And so I know Cody's really excited about that too, as we're looking to bring talent And our bus drivers. So this again is our hourly pay. As a reminder, we do an hour and a half minimum for routes. That's something that I know other, some districts do as well, where they might pay an hour and a half minimum, but this is really just looking at those hourly pays because we know exactly what that is. So here again, we're still a little bit below, but with that $4.50, we'll be moving up there. And again, we'll continue that hour and a half minimum per route. And then they also receive, as well as our food service, a retention bonus as well. So that went over well and we'll continue doing that this year. So as we look at our faculty, and I have that little asterisk there, again, just remembering that first of all, this is looking at data prior to our negotiations. And then with the faculty, really looking at, there's a position code 53 that's teacher and looking at people that were 1.0 and 100% because they get all broken up, sometimes they're doing all sorts of different things. So really trying to focus it there for our staff because that's the best way to compare this. And if we need to dig in further on other ones, we can. But as we look at the data, that's the easiest way to look at this. So when we look at that, and that is the majority of our staff, our faculty, here again, you see our beginning, we're not too far off from the average there. And we're a little bit off there in that median. As we look at it, it's 60,928 versus the 62,362. And then our maximum, again, that represents our highest paid. It does go a little bit above. above our structure, and that can happen from time to time. And that can change, because it's based on the highest person as well. So again, I just, I can't say enough about how excited I am with having that referendum, and just so appreciative of the board putting that out there to the community, doing all the work and the research, and meetings, and our community to listen and show up and help support that. It will only bring better talent and enhance our current staff that are here. Whether they've just started, or they've been here for a long time, everything that they're doing is so important, and they work so hard. So we're glad to be able to move in a different direction there, to get closer to our goal of that competitive wage or salary. And again, just the benefits, the staff, the students, they just do such an amazing job. And people just know that it's different when they come here. And they hear that, and people are talking about it. So that really does help bring in that talent as well.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Sarah?
My question is just in terms of timing and process to look at it again, because a lot of those other districts and comps also had operating referendums. So, so trying to figure out where, as our operating referendum comes into play next year, and others come into play as well next year, what, I don't know, is it, do we just have to wait another year to see the data, or we start to get access to that sooner?
The detailed data, like we get with this, is generally, we start participating in the fall, and then results are finalized by late January, February. We can always reach out and inquire about minimums, maximums, and those sorts of things, and get that data. I know also from that summit, that many people that are waiting for that biennial budget. So I anticipate a lot of numbers, and things are probably gonna come out later, too. As they, many people talked about, they used to know that they would negotiate in the spring, right? But with that endless CPIU being so high at eight percent, and just different things, some people are gonna be waiting on referendums, too. So I think we're gonna see a lot more people making decisions a little bit later in the year.
The data that we received thus far tells us that many districts are not gonna hit CPIU. At least, that's what they're purporting now, without having the benefit of the biennium.
Yeah, and I think, too, the other factors that are playing into that is health insurance and other benefits as well. Again, I can't believe how well-run our district is. And again, that goes back to staff being smart consumers of health insurance, and doing what they need, going to their preventative visits, seeking that assistance, and thinking about, do I go to urgent care versus ER? Can I do telehealth? Can I do this or that? And just being really thoughtful about that, because other districts are not running as well. And those benefit costs are gonna eat into that as well. So, there's lots of different factors that are gonna play into it.
I don't think we've announced it publicly, but it might be helpful for the public to know that we are now entering into our second year of a zero percent increase on our health insurance premiums. And we're grateful for the partnerships we forged with our healthcare providers. And I echo your comments, we wouldn't be where we are without the support of our staff being smart consumers.
Yeah, you do a great job.
And my other question, I think you answered this as you were talking, but my question about the median was what population it was describing. And it sounds like that is, this is the median of our actual teachers on the actual schedule, right? Not the median of the schedule itself.
Yeah, so what happens is I get literally all employees from all these districts, and I break that down by position. And then, for faculty, because again, there's so many other variables, the 53 with position code is what I look at, which captures a majority of faculty within the district, and other districts as well. Yep. So, yeah, it's taking all of those data points, and then figuring out that median.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty. Number seven, our action items. We have several second readings. So, to begin with, second reading, A, consider approval of policy 760, food service management, referred by Finance Committee and Kathy Young. Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. I have a second.
Anyone have any comments or any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty. B, second reading, consider approval of policy 761, free and reduced-price meal eligibility.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Second reading, consider approval of policy 762, unpaid meal charges.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Second reading of policy 840, public gifts to the schools. Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Scott, you saved for all this, no discussion. Second reading of policy 851, advertising in the schools. Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I did have a question on this policy. So it's allowing for advertising in our schools. I know it's talking about district property. Is that including our actual buildings itself? Or just our, like, stadiums and our other facilities that we have?
Good question.
I'd be happy to try to field that. Or Scott, I don't mean to step on your side. It's our intent to have an exploratory committee begin to work on this, to address that very question. Thank you for thinking like that.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? F, consider budget revisions. Oh, you have something to present.
The Finance Committee and some of the Finance Committee members for being willing to go through this with me at our meeting back in February. We typically have three budget revisions that take place over the course of the year. One, of course, as you all know, is October, when we revise our budget with our official state aid allocations and tax levy calculations. February and March is the second time that we look to make revisions. Those come by for a variety of reasons. Most notably is, sometimes it takes halfway through our fiscal year before we find out what our official grant allocations are. For the most part, we know, but there's a few exceptions. And so, this gives us an opportunity to react to those changes on grants. We also, in this particular series of revisions, we also had a couple of revenues that we talked about, I know, at previous meetings. But just to let you know, again, one was the revenue that we received from the Village of Mount Hore for the TID closure. And then the second one was the health reimbursement amount that we received from Quartz, our healthcare provider. And fortunately, again, as we've talked about before, so I know I'm repeating myself, but just to remind the group that we're able to use those dollars to reinvest back into our post-employment benefit trust. And that allows us to become whole for the amount that we typically deposited into that account each and every year. And so, these revisions reflect those activities. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, thanks, Finance Committee.
Anyone, any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Number eight, citizen comments. Number nine, future agenda items. As always, share your ideas with Dr. Slarnow and Diana.
May I make a point about, about the future agenda items? I was reminded earlier that the March 20th meeting has gone away. So my point is moved, but had that meeting, had that meeting been taking place, I would have asked for time on that agenda to discuss in sort of pre-meeting format, what our discussion about board norms would look like on, on the 3rd of April. I'm concerned that, that, I think, I think, well, it won't surprise any of you to know that I, I don't think a lot about the time that we're gonna spend on, on, on April 3rd on board norms. I, and this is an appropriate agenda item to express those concerns. But I, I do have concerns that, that we are not thoughtful, that that meeting isn't narrowly prescribed, that we know what we're, we're doing before we get into the meeting. So we're not all, you know, all over the place, board norms this, board norms that, when, in my way of thinking, there are already two board norms at work. We're adults, and we're elected officials. And that should be enough. And so, that's why, that's why I was going to ask for some time for us to have a pre-meeting discussion, but I understand now that that, that can't take place. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm still really, really concerned about what those, what that discussion will be like, what kind of parameters there are, and ultimately, what, what we'll decide at that meeting.
Dr. Slarnow, it's party take care.
Thank you for asking the question. And actually, there is time, because the only meeting that's canceled on the 20th is the Safety and Wellness Committee meeting. And so, we can absolutely have a discussion item. I will be working with Dr. Nierad, the gentleman who is the consultant from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards?
Yep.
Hopefully between now and that meeting on the 20th, to gather some of that information for us. So, if the board sees fit, we can absolutely have a pre-discussion on this in advance of April 3rd's meeting.
I, and I, for once, I'm, I'm happy to, my memory is loose, is leaving me, but I, I think that if we, I think if we, if we take time to do that on the 20th, that will be well-served by spending that time. We cannot be feeling ourselves around in the, in the dark for, for a discussion like that, that, again, to me, doesn't, doesn't even need to take place. So let's make sure that we're, we're not wasting time, being respectful of others, and, and we're headed in the right direction.
Anyone else about future meeting agenda items? Number 10, schedule next meetings. Anything to highlight?
Yeah, just that one that we just talked about. And that is that March 20th, we won't have safety and wellness, but we will have our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM.
Alrighty. Number 11, moving to closed session. Contemplative closed session, first section 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specific public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons requires a closed session to wit employee compensation. Looking for a motion. So.
Second.
And this is a roll call vote. Rod?
Yes.
Leah?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So we will move to closed session in five minutes?